Thursday, August the 11th, Board of Education Business Meeting. Starting off with the opening items, 1.01, we will call the meeting to order. Moving to 1.02, we need a declaration of quorum. We have a couple of individuals that we need to excuse.
We have to excuse Ms. Enriquez Dunblak and Ms. Val Breckel.
Sir.
All right, Dr. Thomas.
Yes.
Ms. Lonnas.
Yes.
Mr. Garden.
Yes.
Ms. Glover Jones.
Yes.
And I also vote yes. Moving to 1.03, adoption of the agenda.
Will we adopt the agenda as presented?
Second.
All right. Mrs. Glover Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Garden.
Yes.
Mrs. Lonnas.
Yes.
Dr. Thomas.
Yes.
And I also vote yes. Next is 1.04, let's lead us everybody in a pledge of allegiance. I can't wait for when we have our student of the month, so we can get our students back here.
I recommend that our representatives lead us.
Okay, I agree. Mr. Clark.
All right, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, good job. All right, moving to 1.05, report of closed session. The Board of Education met in closed session on July the 14th, 2022, for the purpose of a discussion of personal agenda items. Moving to 1.06, public comments. As of right now, I don't have any.
I'm sorry.
Okay, at least it's filled out.
Yes. I realize I didn't realize I had to do that to you.
Okay, so is the... Are we good?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right. Nope.
All right. Thank you.
And you know you have about five minutes, so give you a one-minute warning, but...
Thank you, I appreciate that. My name's Lyda Henni. I entered the public school system at a time when there had already been removed from schools. At age seventeen, I graduated without being introduced to the good news of Jesus Christ. Son of the living God, I fear many of our children are in the same position. I wasn't taught the truth that God, our Creator, sent His only Son, Jesus, one of the Virgin Mary, to die for our sin. He gave His life so that we could be clean before God and have relationship with our Creator again. Jesus performed many miraculous signs and wonders when He was on the earth. People were raised from the dead, the lame walked, blind eyes could see that He was aided by the religious community, and they crucified Him. The moment Jesus gave up His Spirit, several unexpected things occurred. There was an earthquake, an eclipse, and many tombs in Jerusalem were opened. But most importantly, the veil of the Temple of God, which was about sixty feet tall and four inches thick, was torn in half from top to bottom. The veil separated the holy of holies where God's presence dwelt from the people. He made a way to end that separation. This was all part of God's redemptive plan because He loves us. He is a holy God and does not want sin to separate us. He sent His only Son to die for our sin so that we could be clean before God. Jesus' life and death were foretold by hundreds of prophecies found in the Bible, which were written hundreds of thousands of years prior to His death. There are many more prophecies of His return that have yet to occur. They sealed Jesus' tomb and posted guards to sand watch because rumor had it He would rise from the dead. After three days, He did rise, and many of the saints whose tombs had opened appeared to many. Over 500 people were eyewitnesses to Jesus' resurrection. His followers touched Him, talked with Him, and received instructions from Him. He gave us the promise of the Holy Spirit to help us, even though this truth occurred over 2,000 years ago. The promise holds true today. There is freedom in Christ, freedom from sin, hope for the future, and abundant life. Those who believe and follow Christ experience a transformation, kind of like a butterfly. The old life of being the caterpillar is gone, and everything is new. The fruit of having Holy Spirit in your life is love, joy, peace, patience, kindness, goodness, faithfulness, gentleness, and self-control. Jesus commanded us to love one another and that Christ followers would be known by their love. What is love? The Passion Translation tells us, love is large and incredibly patient. Love is gentle and consistently kind to all. It refuses to be jealous when blessing comes to someone else. Love does not brag about one's own achievements nor inflate its own importance. Love does not traffic in shame and disrespect, nor selfishly seek its own honor. Love is not easily irritated or quick to take offense. Love joyfully celebrates honesty and finds no delight in what is wrong. Love is a safe place to shelter, for it never stops believing the best for others. Love never takes failure as defeat, for it never gives up. Love never stops loving. Did you know God loves you more than you can imagine? Our children need to hear these truths. We want to see these character qualities develop in their lives. Our children will not know how to love until they experience God's love. That's part of the transformation we experience when we accept Jesus into our lives. The old things are passed away, all things become new. I've been told we celebrate a Pride Month in our middle schools to educate our students to be accepting of the LGBTQ community and to prevent bullying. I propose we have a What Would Jesus Do Month, where Christian students introduce students to the transforming principles of Christianity. I know this all sounds like foolishness to many of you. It would have to me also before I received Christ as my Savior. But for the one that might feel a tugging toward God, draw near to God, and He will draw near to you. I welcome you to attend my church, Graves Church in Maryland Heights, to learn more. Thank you for listening, and I pray you have ears to hear, accept, and implement my proposal. Thank you. I think that Christ, introducing Christ to our kids would be life-changing for them, and it would solve a lot of the problems we're facing in our schools right now. And there is no separation of church and state. That's not in our Constitution.
I don't see a ton of public comments, so it's okay with everyone when we move to our reports. Moving to 2.01, the President's Report. On Monday, August the 22nd, we're very excited to have our beginning of our new school year. We can't wait to welcome our students back for the first day of school. I'm also very proud to report that Rittner High School cross-country coach, Michael Aiken, applied for a grant through Brooks, a well-known company that sells running shoes and apparel. The grant, called the Brooks Booster Club, supports high school cross-country and track teams across the country that meet certain eligible criteria. Each grant cycle, ten teams across the United States are selected as recipients. We are excited to share that Rittner High School has been selected to receive one of the grants for the upcoming school year. As a part of the grant, Rittner cross-country and track athletes will receive $8,000 in shoes for training. Also included in the grant was an additional $3,500 in running apparel, a brand-new team tent, and $2,000 that the team can use for equipment and other needs. This grant will play a huge role in helping continue the process of building Rittner's running programs into an annual contenders while supporting and providing opportunities to our athletes. Congratulations and great job. Moving to 2.02, Superintendent's Report, Dr. Chris Gilroy.
Thank you, Dr. Allen. So, Board members, I'm excited to report that Christina Andrade Melly, Rittner High School English teacher and 2021 Diamond Circle Teacher of the Year, is the fifth Rittner educator in the last nine years to be recognized at the state level for excellence in teaching. So, the why for Christina moving along this year is there was one year that the state did not continue with their Educator of the Year program, and we wanted every Rittner Teacher of the Year to have the opportunity to apply. Dion Johnson at Marvin was the 2022 Diamond Circle Teacher of the Year, and he'll be applying for the State Teacher of the Year program next year. Christina is one of 34 teachers from across the state, recognized by the State Department of Education as a Regional Teacher of the Year. She's one of 10 from the St. Louis region to receive the honor. It's coordinated by Education Plus and the St. Louis RPDC. Ms. Melly has spent her entire educational career at Rittner, starting as a kindergarten student at Wyland, continuing through Rittner until she graduated in 2006. She went away to Mizzou to earn her degree, and she returned to Rittner as an adult ed teacher and so on. She's been a full-time ELA teacher at Rittner High School for the last 11 years. Ms. Melly is also the president of the Rittner NEA and is a committee chair at the state level. Regional honorees will be considered for Missouri State Teacher of the Year. That announcement is going to be in October. I believe that Christina is going to be an extremely strong candidate. With her unmatched positive attitude, passion for teaching, and compassion for every child she serves, she's a standout not only in Rittner but also in the entire St. Louis region. So proud that Ms. Andrade Melly is being recognized at the regional level and hope to recognize her in October in the State Teacher of the Year program. As was said at the beginning, Board members, Ms. Melly is the fifth Rittner teacher in the last nine years to achieve this level of recognition through the Teacher of the Year program. Just another example that we've got some amazing educators in this district. That concludes my report.
I feel like we should still platform.
I think it's also an excellent opportunity to point out how we have our Grow Your Own program. She started individually without any help on her own.
Yes.
Ms. Melly's involved in the Rittner Grow Your Own program as well, mentoring prospective teachers.
Yes, she's definitely a good example. Moving to 2.03, Special School District Report. Since Ms. Val Breckel is not here, there hasn't been anything here unless anybody else wanted to report in. It looks like the next governing council meeting is scheduled for September the 19th, 2022.
Yeah, and I think we joked about it when I said I would be the alternate to both of them, that, oh, that'll never happen. Well, here we are, both of them.
So, I'll take the heat out there. Jennifer, we're moving right next to you. So, that concludes the report for the Special School District Report. Moving to 2.04, MSBA Report.
So, just coming up, we have, well, not coming up real soon, we've got a lot of stuff before then, but we have our annual conference coming up November 3rd through the 6th. If you are planning on attending, make sure you let Michelle know, Ms. Glover, and we'll roll the tape.
Hello, everyone, and welcome to the Missouri School Boards Association's Board Report for the month of August. We thank you for the opportunity to share some news and information during a few minutes of your board meeting. We begin with a look at the opening of a new school year in Missouri. Our public schools will start the new year this month with great anticipation, but in an environment that continues to be challenging. Among those challenges are COVID-19 remaining with us, school districts throughout the state facing serious issues with teacher recruitment and retention, and many students dealing with mental health issues. Yet, school boards, administrators, and teachers continue to do the work of educating the 900,000 students in Missouri's public schools. The National Superintendent of the Year, Missouri's own Dr. Curtis Kane, told Board members and administrators attending MSBA's Igniting Great Ideas Summit, "The work may be grueling at times, but it's worth it." He also said, "In the current environment, it's critical that Board members and administrators continue to tell the story of public education."
And others are filling the void in terms of the narrative, in terms of the story of what we are doing. We have to get back to our road shows, addressing multiple audiences, getting out in the road, on the road, pressing flesh with handshakes, talking to people, sharing factual stories in terms of what's happening within our schools. Not the stuff that people hear on cable news, what's actually happening in our schools, and amplifying what already exists.
Kane also said, "It's always important to keep kids at the center of all decision-making." Dr. Kane serves as superintendent in the Rockwood School District in suburban St. Louis. That theme of focusing on what's best for all kids was echoed by MSBA Executive Director Melissa Randall during her remarks to the recent MSBA Delegate Assembly.
You stay laser-focused on what you need to do for your children and for our children. Those 900,000 students belong to all of us, and we have an equal moral and ethical obligation to make sure that when they finish their education system here in Missouri, they are prepared for their futures.
Randall thanked Board members for their service during some of the most challenging times they've ever faced. The State Work Group, charged with studying what's known as competency-based learning, has completed its work and issued its recommendations to the State Board of Education. The idea is that students should advance in their education based on their mastery of skills and expectations, not based on seat time. One of the co-facilitators of the group, Dr. Mike Fulton, presented a session on the issue during MSBA's recent Igniting Great Ideas Summit, and he described the competency-based learning approach.
Public schools exist for a reason, is to provide access for every child in our state to a great education that gets them ready for their future. Competency-based learning is not appropriate as a mindset that you use to solve complex problems that empower students to take control of their lives and be college, career, and workforce-driven in ways that are customized.
The recommendations of the Success Ready Students Work Group include designing a competency-based assessment system for students, designing a competency-based accreditation system for school districts, and expanding business-to-education partnerships. Nominations are open for the Carter Dean Award Excellence in Advocacy Award. The award, named for MSBA's former executive director, is presented each year to a local board member who excels at advocating for public education. Nominations for the award, which will be presented at next year's Legislative Forum, are being accepted through August 31st. There's still time to submit proposed changes to MSBA's advocacy positions. Those position statements express to legislators, policymakers, the public, and the media where MSBA stands on issues like school board elections, charter school expansion, vouchers, and many others. Delegates will vote on proposed changes at the Fall Delegate Assembly this November in Kansas City. The deadline to submit new or revised position statements is August 31st. Join us in Kansas City at the Kansas City Convention Center, November 3rd through the 5th, for MSBA's annual conference in cooperation with the Missouri Association of School Administrators. This year's conference will include three general sessions, including keynote speaker Olympian Jackie Joyner-Kersey, more than 90 concurrent sessions, a one-day education expo, and more. Registration information is available on the MSBA website. You can also register to attend the 2022 Midwest School Safety Summit, to be held November 2nd and 3rd in Kansas City. This event is designed to provide information for those who govern and work in K-12 schools, colleges, and universities, as well as law enforcement officials and others working with MSBA member districts. The Midwest School Safety Summit is presented by the MSBA Center for Education Safety and the Safe and Sound Schools Organization. That's it for this month's edition of the MSBA Board Report. Thanks for allowing us to have some time at your board meeting, and so long from Columbia.
As always, we have a lot of resources out there, so make sure that you're going out, reading your emails that you get from MSBA and NSBA, and that concludes my report.
I did have one question.
Yes?
There's the Outer Refresher, and I had asked Michelle, because I had tried to go on to do my Outer Refresher, but I couldn't, the idea of the username must have changed, so I couldn't get in.
Right, so I contacted them, and if you have a problem with that, then you need to follow the prompts or just call them, because everything is through the individual. They don't let me.
Let you do it, okay.
I did mine, I had to call them. They got on it that day, within an hour or so, I got an email back from them saying, here's what you need to do.
Because I don't allow you to be able to do mine as well.
And it took me about, I don't know, a half hour, 45 minutes to complete it.
Okay, you're supposed to.
Very fast.
But I just wanted to remind everybody, so, thank you.
Thanks, good, come on, please.
Yes?
Couple points. Dr. Leonard Young was our parliamentarian, and he was the president of the Parliamentarian Association of Missouri of the World, whatever it is. I mean, he was a sharp guy. He unexpectedly passed away earlier this summer. Keep him in mind. He was a great guy, very valuable, about MSBA and everything else. And is there, for any of us, any Board member that calls? So, he's told us all at the Delegate Assembly, if you ever have any questions about anything at all, important, you can give them all. Second thing is the registration for NSBA is coming up soon, October, November-ish, and we still need to have a discussion about NSBA compared to the new coalition of state school districts and whatever that's being formed, and which direction we want to go, what offers what, for how much, and things like that. Because it looks like they're going to start competing against each other, they're going to have a spring conference. And obviously, the boards that are tight with budgets and everything, and all this going, if they go, pick this one or that one. And I think we're going to have to have some exploratory time to decide which one might offer us the best education for our board member needs.
Yeah, Michelle, do you think that's something that we could get us some information on both, and then we can decide what we want to do?
Yes.
Thank you. Is that good?
Does it? Yes, yeah.
I mean, is that a good idea to give? That way, then, we can all take it and decide.
Yeah, we just got to have someone get the information on it, kind, you know, like this new group. Last time I read, they had like 24 or 25 states, I mean, they're only about halfway there. And, you know, with any other organization, you know, when you start losing members like that, it's going to end up, could end up being a cascading effect where they lose more, and then when they lose so many, then they won't be able to be a boarding to put on a national conference. So, we have to be aware of that as well. We are paying NSBA a good amount of dues to be part of that. So, it might be something to reevaluate and see which way we want to go.
It's a good idea.
Yeah, and I think we did, I will, but I think we, you know, take the 2023 years.
Yeah. But the other group so far has said that they're, I don't understand it, but they're not trying to have dues or anything like that, membership dues, but that's now, that's to get people, that's to get people in, you know, it's like, cable is free for the first year, for your agreement. So, we need to do keep of that.
Yep. It's very important that we kind of not maintain or continue education so that we can become even better board members.
Absolutely.
Absolutely, anybody have any other questions? Girl, sit down.
Yep, thank you for sharing that.
Yes, ma'am.
Absolutely. Moving to business items, 3.01, competency-based learning program approval, Dr. Denise Stewart.
Oh, sorry. So, MSBA already provided an overview of CBF for us, right? So, we can know this very quickly today. So, last week, our team, our competency-based learning committee, not the whole committee, but some of the members came to present competency-based learning, the vision for our district, the definition, the tools that teachers and students will use, and the structures. And Dr. Nobel and I are here to kind of summarize what we stated last week. So, when we think about our vision, competency-based learning is aligned to our vision. We really promote student agency so that students can set and monitor and achieve their goals, so that all of our students can graduate college and career ready. And when we think about our mission, we want to create that learning environment so that students, they have a growth mindset, and that our teachers model that growth mindset as well for our students, so that there's a culture of high expectations, so that our students can critically solve problems, so that they are successful in our diverse global society. CBL is totally aligned to our equity statement, all of our students being challenged, ensuring that all of our students receive grade-level instruction, and that we use data to inform our instruction, that relationships are very important in our classrooms, also that competencies are used to improve college and career readiness. Just to summarize, competency-based learning, and we talked about last week, all the work that we have been doing, we want to ensure that there's input from all stakeholders, ensuring that we have our CBL focus groups, administrative meetings, and our CBL committee to provide that input. Our administrators and our teachers participate on those committees, and ensuring that our students, through one-to-one conferences and then surveys, we receive information from our students, and parent conferences, we receive information from our parents, and open house, and also our strategic planning meeting that we had a few years ago. We also outlined professional development for our apolit schools, year one, two, and three last week, and also our non-apolit schools. The curriculum and instruction department is very busy, creating, with our teachers as well, many teachers across the district, creating progressions for teachers and students to track proficiency with the standards that have been taught, and also proficiency scales, so that is very clear what proficiency looks like across our district, and ensuring that we have observations throughout the district. Our CNI department visits several classrooms and provides some feedback to teachers and administrators, and really, we want to support the implementation of Empower, which is our learning management system that we discussed last week as well.
So, last week, we talked about this timeline. You guys all got handouts. This really outlines where we've been, where we are, and where we're headed, okay? Also want to highlight our CBL framework, which features important tenants that are vital to competency-based learning.
So, when we think about our competency-based learning teacher leader groups, we're very excited to have some of the teachers and administrators a part of these five focus groups. We talked about this last week, but we just wanted to summarize that in a visual for the teacher leader groups.
So, we're really excited again about introducing the teacher-facing proficiency scale, which is on the right, as well as revising our student-facing proficiency scales. So, we're already on version two of those to make sure that those are aligned and clear success criteria for our students. This again is an example of a learning progression, which outlines the full year of learning and shows all of the proficiency scale topics. And then, we're really excited to start using the Empower Learning Platform to document evidence of learning. We actually are going to have teachers start their journey next Tuesday at noon. Really excited, we have a consultant from Empower coming out to do that training in person, because we figured training teachers on a digital learning platform via Zoom is not going to be easy, so we really want people there to support them when they say, what screen do I go to, how do I do that? So, really excited that that starts next Tuesday. I'm very excited. This visual shows what Empower looks like for students and teachers, including the Target browser, which displays tiles that represent proficiency scales and student progress. And then, the three major components of Empower, instruction, scoring, and reporting, those are the features of it. And our plan is for year two, competency-based learning teachers to start using Empower. Then in year three, our students will start going into Empower, and they will start using the playlists to engage in their learning.
And this is just a review of the rotation model that we discussed last week to ensure that at least 75% of instruction is at grade level and that students also have an opportunity to practice the skills that they need as well, and also comparing that to the secondary instructional model for our secondary schools. So, when we look at this, this is our plan for competency-based learning for this school year, so we are seeking your approval. So we are seeking your approval of this CBL plan for this school year. Do we have any questions?
I just think this is wonderful. This is what we, this is what our kids need. I just sit here thinking of the possibilities and everything of, you know. When I went home from school, my parents would ask me, what'd you learn today? Nothing. Okay, because I was zoned out because teachers up there talking. Okay, they are now in charge. They're going to be in charge of their education. They're going to be the core of that. And then when they go home now, they can say, this is what all is today. These are the things I've answered today. They will understand working at their own pace as individuals, I just found groups, what they're learning and why. And I just think that's tremendous. And as I said last week, we all know, we all know it's a fact. We all know that kids, adults, everyone learns at a different pace. This addresses that known fact. And I think we're just dead on with doing this. It's great to stay in Missouri, listen to what we're doing and their fellowies, right? So this is tremendous. I think you brought a great group together. I've heard nothing but good things about it. Teachers are fired up about it. And I just can't wait for the day where it's spread across K to 12 in all schools.
I really appreciate your presentation last week. If anything, it's definitely putting that student in a center of their learning and making them an independent owner. And so I definitely, I don't have any questions, but a lot of times I think it's very important for people to know that we really did talk about a lot of this last week at our work session concerning this. And so wonderful presentation and I have no further questions on this either, so.
I have a question. So what students are, are they chosen or they choose to, or are they choosing this program? Kind of they like the concept?
So we are piloting grades two through seven right now. So.
In math?
In math, yes.
With the intent, can you talk about the next steps?
Right. Well, we already started some work with ELA, you know, Michael.
Yeah, so we have some energetic people in ELA, myself and Matt McCo included, who could help but start putting in some of the new ELA curriculum frameworks. So our goal is to continue with math as we engage in the math review and revision process. Starting in September of this year, our goal is to embed competency-based learning in most, if not all, of our math curriculum as well. So it'll naturally occur during that review revision and then we'll go into ELA. Presented about competency-based learning yesterday to all of our new teachers. I had a lot of new teachers who were very curious and interested. From a new PE teacher who was like, do these exist for PE? And I said, do you have standards? She said, yes. I said, yes, it can exist, you know? So it's the work that goes behind it to make the proficiency scales, to make learning clear and visible for students. So it can happen in anything and we've got a lot of people who are excited about it.
So our goal is to add a grade level a year. So we'll be in high school in a few years.
Well, we're going, but it sounds pretty.
Well, you can come back and rehearse. I do want to say, I remember, I can't remember how long it was, but we had the first, like, meeting about it. And I remember sitting next to a teacher from Marion. And you guys were talking about this plan and I'm like, gosh, it's been so long. Can't we do this sooner? She looks at me and she says, no, we have to get it right. So we have to take the time to do it right. And so I was like, okay. So it's really neat to see it coming through and the work that you guys are doing and seeing how it's all coming forward now. So I'm super excited.
Every year we learn more and more, so.
Some of us that are impatient are still saying, can't we do this?
That would be me. I had the opportunity to go attend the summer session for the CBL program. I will say it was, for me, it was invigorating. And I left after session and I told Dr. Kilbride, yeah, I appreciate we had this when my kids were going through our schools, because I think it would have made a difference for them in just that level of empowerment. I mean, we all try to utilize the evaluate and the different programs that we've had throughout the year, but thinking about the level of empowerment that it gives and ownership to the student. In those sessions, there was one question that came up because I attended one of the secondary ones regarding the proficiency scales is how are we going to help our guardians and their mindset surrounding like the whole grade level and seeing the letter grade, I mean, in the essence of as we're building those proficiency scales on our secondary level? So just keeping that in mind, like, it's a transition. Yes, we get it. We understand the impact and why we need to do this to help support our students and their growth, but helping the community, the guardians understand, like, it may not be an A, but that's okay because they are on this, they're understanding this type of information and that's what we want. So I just want us to be mindful of that in that space. But I mean, when I seen this in college, wherever we were, I kept, some national conference and I was like, you all have to go to Colorado to learn about this. I don't know what it is, but this CBL stuff, we've got to learn about it. We've got to learn about it. We've got to do it. That's how it was when I came back from that conference. So I'm excited. I can't wait.
You got the last word, certainly.
Yeah.
Over the next couple of years too, there'll be opportunities for you to learn more and to attend conferences. And so I hope to make that available to you. Each year, we plan to come back to you with the year's plan. So we have this conversation, share with you our progress, our obstacles, to keep you up to date. Sorry, Brett.
It's all right. Good news is good to share, okay? And this is, this is great. This is great news. But to the business at hand, I believe that we approved the competency-based learning program that has been presented to this board this time.
Second.
Ms. Glover Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Garden?
Yes.
Ms. Lonas?
Yes.
Dr. Thomas?
Absolutely.
And I also vote yes. Motion carries. Thank you so much for all your hard work. Next up, we have 3.02 SCLCC agreement for dual credit and enrollment. Dr. Bruce Green.
Well, good evening, board members.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, Sarah O'Brien, as well as community members. So tonight, we're seeking your approval for, to continue our partnership with St. Louis Community College for dual credit and dual enrollment for the upcoming school year. Definitely wonderful opportunities for our students. So last school year, 2021, 2022, we had 28 students take advantage of our dual enrollment opportunity with St. Louis Community College. And 75% of those grades for those courses were As or Bs, and it's about 75%. Of those 28 students that we had, most of them were full-time students and three of our students graduated with an associate's degree as well as a high school diploma. The cost per credit hour remains the same as it was in the previous year, which is $72.50. And just excited about the opportunity to continue this partnership with St. Louis Community College for our dual enrollment opportunities. Also, the material that you have inside for dual credit, definitely want to seek your approval for that as well. Looking at a little over 75% of our students are in Bs and Bs for our dual credit courses as well. Roughly five courses are offered through the St. Louis Community College under dual credit. And those credits are classes, are college class one and two, oral communications, intermediate algebra, and pre-calculus. Just keep in mind that our students, they pay for the dual credit opportunities. They're $25 per credit hour. And then we have one course that's a flat $25 rate, which is intermediate algebra. I have at least to find out and know that the St. Louis Community College does offer a scholarship opportunity for students that meet criteria that's set forth by them. Set forth by them and one of them is a student has to qualify for free or reduce lunch and that student has to have at least a 2.6 overall grade on average for dual credit. And if they meet that criteria certified by our counselor staff and our principal at the school, they can take up to six college credits per semester, no cost to them. Definitely something that we want to continue to take advantage of because we have been. But I want to do a better job of making sure that we expose as many students as possible. Again, roughly 80 students participated in dual credit and about 100 different grades were earned another with dual credit enrollment. Again, seeking your approval for dual credit and dual enrollment at the rates that are mentioned as highlighted in the background was uploaded into the board materials.
I know that my daughter certainly enjoyed the opportunity to do SCLCC. I had a student that made a suggestion because whenever they do the presentation, part of the question that they had asked, because sometimes it is a hardship to be able to find that. And I think that would be very important to, as soon as this is passed, whenever you do your presentation, to let students know that that is a possibility for them. And I know that there were a lot of pamphlets handed out and there was a suggestion of maybe having it tied to a QR code instead so you're not wasting a lot of paper. Just as an idea, I don't know if that's possible for them to do this year, but maybe even next year because you know how students are these days. They're very cell phone oriented. Because it is a wonderful program.
It is. It is. And with the dual credit opportunity, students may not even take the course at the school for $25 per credit hour. And from an equity standpoint, if I can't pay for it, there's an option there if I have the opportunity. So that's awesome.
And it's also important to note that the books are included.
Yes.
And how they have them is at the library, yes. And so when they get their class, they sign up and then they go to the library and they're able to pick up their books. And they use them just as if they would be renting them from us at extra charge. And as soon as they're finished with their class, they go back and they deposit their books. And I think that's also important.
That's great. This program opens up a lot of doors that might not be open to our students otherwise.
Absolutely.
This is great. You know, like our International Wellness Center, I think this is, this is a program that needs to grow. We need to just have it explode and have students taking it more and more and more because it's a need.
Will there still be transportation available for students to decide?
Yes.
And is that for part-time or for full day?
I believe we transport for part-time as well as full day. I'll double check.
It's, so I'm for certain it's full day. I think there's a midday bus also. Mr. Lindhorst, there was a question about transportation to St. Louis Community College. It's full day. Is there also a half day?
Yes, I believe so.
I do have a question of clarification. Do we generally have a different contract for MOBAP? Yeah, because I think the pre-calculus classes often do MOBAP, from what I recall. And it's, I think it's a little bit expensive too.
Yes, this one. Yes, ma'am. You're correct.
All right. Do you look for motion?
Yes.
All right. I'd like to make a motion to approve the St. Louis Community College agreement for dual credit and enrollment for the 2022-2023 school year as presented. Is going to take the second. I hear two. Ms. Glover Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Garden?
Yes.
Ms. Lonas?
Yes.
Dr. Thomas?
Yes, ma'am.
And I also. Thank you so much. I agree.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your hard work. Moving to 3.03, second reading policy, JGGA seclusion and restraint. Dr. Chris Kilbride.
So board members, this is considered the second reading. We'll be seeking your approval of draft of policy JGGA. Ms. Hahn is making her way up to the table and would be able to add to any questions that you might have. If you recall, corporal punishment had been a part of our policy JGA. That is coming to you on consent to separate corporal punishment as JGA, which is not allowed in the district. And we would be, this is the second reading, we're seeking your approval of JGGA, which Ms. Hahn covered last week. Can you go through a couple of the highlights of the policy? Can you answer any questions you might have?
I'm sorry. I asked that question about the contractor language in the policy. And I've been looking back over and I was like, where did I see that, that I asked that question?
So a contractor could be someone who, let's say we're having a game, a basketball game, and we are paying someone to help support in that game area who might need to intervene. That would be a contractor.
Yeah, I think it's under district personnel. It would have been a contractor. So board members, JGGA seclusion and restraint interventions will be used only when necessary and in accordance with this policy. They'll never be used as a form of punishment or for the convenience of district personnel. Just want to point out that there was a recommendation to protect property that was removed from the policy recommendation because we believe that as a part of this work, if a child is in a crisis, we may end up having to replace things but we can't replace people. So I didn't believe it appropriate to forward that, forward the policy to you with that information in there. Want to call out prone restraint. Glover Jones mentioned SROs. This board was a bit ahead of the game in that we had the prohibition of prone restraints in our SRO agreements with our three departments that provide SROs, Breckin Ridge Hills, St. John, and St. Anne. We had that in place before House Bill 432 passed and now it is illegal across the state. So this prone restraint prohibition which applied to SROs now applies to all staff, all contractors that work with our kids.
Senator President, I believe that we adopt policy JGGA, which is seclusion and restraint as presented to this board this time.
So I do have one other question, but I do keep moving on with this motion. I do have one other question. It's just regarding the monitoring and recording. I know that we have talked about this before with getting the reports for the number of restraints that may be used in the district. And I just don't recall, maybe we didn't use any this year and I'm hoping that was the case.
So we will be bringing to you the report from Ms. Hahn. The Safe and Drug Free Schools report will be coming to you in September. And that will be coming to you, gives a list of all of the data around discipline. What I'm reporting to the board is when there is a restraint involving a SRO. And I've put that, when that had occurred, I put it in a Friday memo. So I'll go back through when it has occurred and I can tell you when and at what building. But it has happened a small number of times.
And the Safe and Drug Free report was in June, I believe, that report went through.
It went through on consent, but we're coming out and presenting it to you in open session so that the board can.
And I'll make sure to put that on there too, Lisa, and then report that.
Thank you. Second. Ms. Glover Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Garden?
Yes.
Ms. Lonas?
Yes.
Dr. Thomas?
Yes.
So vote yes. Thank you.
Thanks, board.
Thank you. All right, moving to 3.04, return to learning plan approval. Dr. Chris Kilbride.
Okay, so. So board members, I'm back to you this month with the approval of the return to learning plan. So August 11th, this monthly approval will come through the first day of school. 22nd of August, Terrence, looking forward to you having a great first day of school. So again, the why for presenting this on a return to learning, this return to learning plan. This is not necessary anymore. However, in terms of communication to the community, believe it's the right strategy to keep this up in front of people. It is possible at some point that we may need to return to a mask mandatory environment, but that's on a building-by-building basis, based on this plan. There's one school district in St. Louis County that's announced that they are starting off the year mask mandatory in all of their buildings. That's based on the rate, the high rate of community spread that's currently in the county. That's not our structure. We're building by building. In this return to learning report, always keep the dashboard data front and center. As you can see, the dashboard has not been updated since the A.
As you can see, the dashboard has not been updated since the 8th of July. It's updated on Friday afternoons. Mr. Bray works with Ms. Hahn and Dr. LaChance to keep the data accurate. We update the dashboard when there are children in school. Last day of summer academy was the 13th, 14th of July. So this is accurate up through the end of summer academy. We've not had students in school since that point. So the end of that first week of school, the 26th of August, would be the first date that the dashboard is updated again. And we intend to keep the dashboard updated and available to staff, students, and the community all throughout the year. The presentation is the same. I think it's important to keep the archive of changes out there for the community so that the community and staff could see the progression of changes. There were a lot of changes to the return to learning plan. Started with moving to isolating symptomatic and positive persons in January away from quarantines of close contacts. This was in line with the updated CDC processes, which is isolation for five days and then return for days six through 10 fully masked as symptoms are improving. We moved to mask recommended from a couple of years of mandatory masking. That was the 22nd of February with your leadership. We set the 2% threshold, which I believe is still the appropriate trigger to return to mask mandatory for a period of not less than two weeks if a building hits that 2% threshold. And we've moved away from a district-wide mandate. Still believe that that's the right approach. During a outbreak or a significant increase, we put restrictions in place last January. As the cases started going down significantly, we stopped that strategy. And then we began to allow access to buildings by outside groups for rental and so on. And that goes through Mr. Smith's operations departments. Board members, if we do have a building that hits that 2% threshold, then the buses that those children would be riding in would be mask mandatory as well for a period of time. We had mask recommended in buildings, and we had mask mandatory on buses. We'll continue to keep a close eye on federal legislation. But right now, the plan is 2% threshold for a building. That bus and students must be mandatory masking on that bus. Ms. Hahn and Mr. Smith do a great job of having a significant number of additional disposable masks. We realize now that's something that we're probably going to have to invest in even larger supply because we've got the fall and the winter season coming up, and it's possible there could be some further spikes, even though right now it appears that we might be coming down from a bit of a high. So making a recommendation for your approval of the return to learning plan based, no changes in the plan. If ever there were to be a change to return to learning plan, we would convene a return to learning committee to get their feedback before we bring a recommended change.
So I do have a question, just kind of around the cleaning behind everything. How are we doing as far as our contractor having enough staff to be in the buildings and make sure that things are staying clean?
Yeah, so we know that staffing and with your support in increasing salaries, that's, you know, that's a lever to improve that. I don't have an update right now on the status of WFF. I can, I can get that and get that in the Friday memo. I know that the building and the AGS teams have been working very hard to get buildings ready. And talking with Mr. Smith.
AGS is fully staffed.
Oh, they are? That's great news.
Yeah.
They've been working hard. There's a couple of spots at the high school. Then Mike, do you want to speak a little about those? I've always.
There's some, there's some construction areas at the high school. We chose to hold up on stripping and waxing those areas while construction was going on just with all the dust and everything's tracked back and forth. Once that construction is finished, then finish up those areas. So those will not be as crisp as the rest of the district right now. I walked all the two of the buildings today, and they're looking great. So still some things button up that are looking good.
They have enough staff in there to just keep things clean because I think keeping things clean and.
Correct.
Everything helps with the, keeping the spread of germs down, too.
That's correct. Dr. Kilbright, what is included in that cleaning? Is it like the entire room on stairwells, or is it just bathrooms? Or is it?
Which one?
I didn't hear this question.
What all is included in the cleaning that is done by AGS?
Right, it's all of that. Restrooms, I heard you say restrooms and stairwells.
Yeah, stairwells. I heard. Like it's a tie.
Now, last year, we were, both AGS and Ritter, we were staffed. We were shorthanded. So now that they are fully staffed, we're very, we're close. We expect this is going to be much, much better.
All right. Me, too.
You'll be our eyes inside that.
Right.
Oh, I have pictures. Awesome.
I'd like to make a recommendation to approve the return to learning plan as presented.
Second.
Mrs. Glover Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Garden?
Yes.
Mrs. Lomas?
Yes.
Dr. Thomas?
Yes.
I vote yes.
Thank you, board members.
Thank you.
Next up, 3.05, first now recommendations. Dr. Richard Chans.
Good evening, board members.
Good evening.
I'm here to present items 1 through 36 for your consideration. I'm asking for your approval and open to any questions or comments you may have.
Number 34, is that just a similar name to someone we had before? Is that someone?
It is the same person.
Or is it? It is the same person.
Hmm.
Can you talk a little bit about what those people would be doing?
Those numbers 32 through 36, we have a number of new administrators in the district. And they, in order to maintain their certification, need mentorship for two years. And so we reach out to retired administrators that aren't currently working in the district to provide mentorship. Typically, either one to three hours a month as a mentor. And that particular person has a specialty in alternative education. We have a new director at the Husky Academy.
Gee, I was excited.
Yeah, it's good to see some of these names.
Yeah. Is that spelling right on that last name? That's what threw me off. On 34.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering.
I thought so. That's what threw me off. So thank you for asking that.
We'll prove as a minimum.
All right, I promise that.
Thank you for asking. I said, oh, no, that spelling is different, so it cannot possibly be.
That is, that is the same.
That's why I thought, well, maybe it's somebody with the name real similar, but with a little bit different spelling.
It's good to see 31 and 32. We got quality mentors right there. Senator President, I'd like to move that we accept recommendations 1 through 36 as presented.
Second. All right. Mrs. Lomas?
Yes.
Dr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Garden?
Yes.
Mrs. Glover Jones?
Yes.
And I also vote yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Glover.
And just, just for future discussion, how many certified teacher positions do we have open right now?
We have one. We're, we're working on a high school counselor position. That's, that's the only open.
Awesome.
And I spoke with somebody tonight. I hope to have that position filled early next week.
You've done an incredible amount of work, sir.
I appreciate it.
I mean, this is just awesome. We, we, we all know Ritter stands out for a lot of things, right? How many school districts in the county, that there's 23 or 24 of them? How many can sit there tonight, right now, and say, we only need one certified person, and we can seal that deal tomorrow?
There's a few that still have over 100 vacancies that are neighbors. And they're suffering, and they have over 75 to 100 support staff vacancies also. So it's, it's very challenging.
That is a direct credit to that man, that man and the staff that they have supported. All right? That is. I don't know if we understand the gravity of that right now. My daughter in Ferguson Forest School District was asked, she teaches four different classes right now, four different subjects in a day, year-long classes. And the department chair came to her and said, would you mind teaching a freshman biology class as a fifth class? Because they don't have teachers to do it.
It's very, very challenging for our neighbors, too.
Thank you, Dr. Thomas, right?
I mean, that's, this is big, guys. You don't know. I watch the news, I talk to a lot of people in different districts in there. They're just standing there. We don't know.
It's because they believe in our mission. That's why they're coming.
Okay? Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you for your hard work.
Thank you.
Moving to 3.06, board member comments. Does anyone have anything to share?
Yes. Carrying on with that same discussion, I'm talking to Dr. Kilbright, various topics. And I asked him if I could share this. So if I get it wrong, please, please feel free to jump in. Of, of some of the teachers that we hired, we hired a mother-daughter duo. And they're coming from the Francis Howell School Districts. I bring that, I bring that up because they saw the writing on the wall from the Board of Education there. Two members got elected to the board with different ideas, we'll just say. And it's, I think we're going to see a migration of more teachers from that district because of the people at the top. Okay? And this, these are just two of them that Chris mentioned me yesterday. You know, they left there because they didn't like what's going on. And it came to us. We got two people with a lot of experience and knowledge, and they did walk in first day and make a difference. Which I guess then reminds me, as a board member, that boardsmanship is a delicate balance that we all have. And anytime in one election or another, things can really change for the board, which changes the students, which changes everything. And we have that delicate balance right now that we are all student-focused. There are elements out in our community that go around telling people what we're teaching in school when they have no idea. And that clip that we saw from MSBA, from the superintendent of the year, he was dead on. He is dead on. We have to tell people what we are doing in the schools, what we are having done in teaching and doing in the school district. Because if we don't, there'll be those elements out there that are out and out lying, lying to our constituents about what we're teaching in the school. For their own means, for their own satisfaction, whatever it is, they're going from group to group, door to door, and telling people we're teaching things that we haven't even talked about. So we do need to get out the good news of what we are doing in the schools. Okay, so if you go out and start talking to people on different things, be bold, stand out, and say, this is what we are doing, and this is what we aren't doing. So that we can get the truth to the Ritter students without, again, to our constituents. And last thing is, the week the school starts is the Lions Overland Fair.
That's what I wanted to remind you of.
Okay? Up in Norman Park. Come up, good food, good people, good rides for the kids. It's always a good time. I invite everyone out. Come on out. It's always a good time. And the community really supports us in it. And every dollar that's spent there and earned there is spent here locally in the Ritter School District.
And that is the 25th, the 26th, the 27th, and the 28th. I was double checking the dates.
Yes.
And I think that's also an important time for us as board members to be also there, kind of representing our district and connecting, getting reconnected to our communities.
And just so, and just so everybody knows, President or myself are members of the Lions Club right now.
I don't know what I'm doing yet, but I'm sure I will do something.
That's Black and Orange Day weekend.
Yes.
Yes.
Fair doesn't start till noon, so we've got plenty of time.
Yes. Well, I got softball tournament that weekend, too.
You just throw your whole day.
Yes.
There you go. Make a whole weekend though.
Well, and you have to go, and you have to ride the fair, so.
Yes.
Oh, absolutely.
That's tradition. No, I know.
You can watch us ride the fair.
Thank you, Dr. Thomas, for sharing that. I remember growing up, going to the fair. And I would also like to also thank everyone for your support. The recent transition of my father, it really meant a lot to me. I appreciate it a lot. Thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely. I was thinking. Anybody else have anything to share? Okay, we'll move to the consent agenda.
Move, we approve consent agenda items 3.01 through 3.06.
It's actually four. It's four. 4.01?
4.01.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I didn't move it down far enough. About 4.01 to 4.09?
There you go.
That was in there.
Second. All right. Mrs. Glover Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Garden?
Yes.
Mrs. Lomas?
Yes.
Dr. Thomas?
Okay.
I vote yes as well. Motion carries. Moving to closed session. I motion. Motion to reconvene in closed session per State Statute 610-021 for the purpose of discussion of personnel agenda items. Second. Mrs. Glover Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Garden?
Yes.
Mrs. Lomas?
Yes.
Dr. Thomas?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. We may have a 10-minute little recess. Actually, a little respite. Come on back.